Good evening, welcome to the July 8, 2013 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Associate Pastor Jeremy Durant from the Troy Assembly of God with us to lead us in the invocation. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation. Pastor Durant?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this group of men and women who make up Troy City Council. And Father, I pray, Lord, that you may bless them this evening. Lord, I ask that you may give them wisdom, understanding, mercy, and grace, Father, Lord, as they deliberate and as they talk about the agenda and the decisions that they meet tonight. I pray, Lord, that your Holy Spirit may guide them in wisdom and in truth, I pray. Lord, that this city may rise in godliness and righteousness, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present? Our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. And our first presentation will be presented by Cindy Stewart.
Good evening. I am here to introduce Carol Carter is here. She's co-chair of the 39th Annual Troy Garden Club Walk, and she's going to tell you a little bit about Wednesday's event.
Thank you.
Oh, and Joanne Preston.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to address the council. To my right is Joanne Preston, a member of the Garden Club and the Troy Historical Society. On Wednesday, July 10, the Troy Garden Club, founded 42 years ago, will hold our 39th Annual Garden Walk. The title of our 2013 walk is Gardens Past and Present. The beautiful gardens of six Troy homes represent the present, and the gardens of the Troy Historic Village, maintained by our club members, are the past. The walk is our annual fundraiser. Proceeds are granted to organizations and individuals in support of their horticultural endeavors. Thirty organizations will receive funding this year. Locally, we support the Troy Historic Village, the Troy Nature Society, the Troy Public Library, and the City of Troy Arbor Day. Our work has been recognized by the Troy City Council with a proclamation. We are nonprofit. Five years ago, Mary Schwark, our current president and four-time Garden Walk chairman, began an annual Troy Student Art Competition, engaging students from elementary through high school. The student's task was to develop a painting which would become our Garden Walk image on promotional postcards and posters. Over 350 entries were received this year. This year's grand prize winner of $100 was Brianna Naughton, a seventh grader at Smith Middle School. Additional prizes were also awarded. Tickets are $10 through tomorrow and may be purchased at Auburn Oaks Garden Center, Telly's Greenhouse, Uncle Luke's, and the Troy Historic Village. On July 10, Garden Walk Day, the ticket price is $15 and available only at the village. Village activities include an arts and crafts boutique with 24 vendors, a plant sale, a fabulous fine sale, and a student art exhibit. The Troy Historical Society will be holding a raffle. The gardens may be viewed from 9:30 to 3:00 p.m., and again, 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. The village gardens and activities may be enjoyed from 9:00 to 8:30. And Joanne will briefly tell you a little bit about the raffle.
My name is Joanne Preston, and I'm representing the Troy Historical Society this evening, so that's the hat I have on. The Troy Historical Society will be hosting the raffle this year at the Troy Garden Walk in the Troy Historic Village. The raffle features over $2,000 worth of gift cards and prizes, and there are over 35 prizes that will be awarded. The donations for the raffles came from 23 different businesses and individuals in and around the Troy community. The raffle tickets can be purchased at the Troy Historic Village site on Wednesday. The winners will be notified already, 8:30 Wednesday evening. The friendship between Troy Garden Club and the Troy Historic Village includes working together on a number of projects. The Troy Garden Walk includes the beautiful gardens at the Troy Village that are maintained by the Troy Garden Club members. Come and see them on Wednesday, July 10, during the Troy Garden Walk. We invite friends and neighbors, gardeners and historians to come visit the village and support our friends at the Troy Garden Walk and in the Troy Historic Village. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, we've notified the police.
That's good.
We're a rowdy group.
I guess so. Our next order of business is a special presentation proclamation celebrating Parks and Recreation Month, and I will move down to the mic. And if I could get Elaine Bowe from Parks and Rec. to come forward, I'd like to read the proclamation. Carol, you don't want to come up? I'm going to present a proclamation celebrating Park and Recreation Month for July 2013. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Troy, and whereas the Parks and Recreation Departments are vitally important to establishing and maintaining a quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Troy Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and Natural Recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas the Parks and Natural Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Troy hereby proclaims July 2013 as Parks and Recreation Month. Be it further resolved that we invite all Troy residents to recognize and celebrate the benefits derived from our excellent Parks and Recreation resources, and encourage everyone to take part in a wide variety of programs, classes, and activities offered at our Troy Community Center and Community Parks. Presented this eighth day of July 2013, it's signed by myself and all members of the city council. Congratulations. Would you like to say something?
Good evening. As you just heard, July is National Parks and Recreation Month. There are many activities and programs planned to highlight the benefits of our services. One of the activities is a program asking, "Why do you love your Parks and Recreation?" Patrons from ages five to 80 have filled out comment cards, and two comments that we have received so far are from Shirley, age 64, said she loves Parks and Recreation because there are a lot of fun events for seniors. Penny, age seven, said she learned how to swim at the community center. We invite all members of the community to join us and participate in National Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, and congratulations to Parks and Rec. It's great. There are no carryover items, no public hearings, so our next order of business is public comment for items on the agenda. And for those citizens that plan to speak at either of the public comment sections this evening, please review the rules and regulations portion of the agenda, as we will strictly enforce those rules. Our first speaker is Marv Reinhardt, resident, to speak on J. 8.
I forgot to sign up for public comment, so that's where I was going to go, because you got to do, I don't know what time to sign up, but I want to talk to public comment. The reason I want to talk about J. 8 is for the last few years, bond rates has been at all-time low. Now that the bond rates are going up, you guys decide, "Let's buy the new bonds at the new rates." Now, why did you guys figure this out when the bonds were the lowest? Because the DDA members just cheat the people in this city. They work up 24 hours a day to figure out how to screw them out a little bit more. They took $50,000 on the library thing, and you don't know how many companies are bankrupt in the Troy DDA. All I know is the interest rates are going up, and you guys are going to buy bonds at higher interest rates than you could have done just six months ago, because you guys just sit on your [bleep] and do nothing.
Point of order. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Teetz.
If we can limit the amount of profanity.
It's okay with me if we have that stricken from the record. Is that consensus? Do we have to make a motion on that?
You don't have to make a motion, but just so I'm clear, do you want just that one word stricken, or the entire comment?
Let's just strike that word.
Okay.
I'm sorry that the young people here tonight had to listen to that. We tried to limit that, but when it comes out before you can stop it, there's not much we can do. Are there any other responses or replies to the public comment? We have no postponed items, so we will go directly to regular business. First item of business is boards and committee appointments. There are no mayoral appointments this evening, so I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Fleming for city council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two persons that I'm nominating tonight to serve on boards and committees, as indicated to the next regular city council meeting for action. First, for the Liquor Advisory Committee, we have Matthew Binkowski for a term expiring January 31, 2015. And for the Traffic Committee, we have Tim Branstadter for the term expiring January 31, 2015. I'm still working on the Zoning Board of Appeal, so I have no name for that tonight.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we nominate Matthew Binkowski for the Liquor Advisory Committee, and Tim Branstadter for the Traffic Committee. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no requests for closed session this evening, so our next order of business is I. 4. And our item is the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, commonly known as SEMCOG, Sustainable Community Recognition Program, which will be introduced by intern Stephanie Dilworth. Good evening.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you. I'm Stephanie Dilworth, and I've been interning at the city manager's office this summer. And while I've been interning, I've begun working on a project in order to assist the city in looking at the best practices that protect the environment and provide for high quality of life. I then began researching the Sustainable Community Recognition Program by SEMCOG. SEMCOG, or for those who don't know, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, uses this program in order to recognize member communities that have taken initiatives to incorporate sustainable activities into their practices. Currently, only nine other cities in Michigan have this distinct award, and we are looking forward to working with SEMCOG to become one of those distinguished communities among them. This recognition program is actually a really valuable resource. This program allows SEMCOG to aid local governments in achieving and maintaining sustainability. The recognition and input from SEMCOG would also benefit the city by enabling Troy to incorporate forward-thinking changes into our community and further integrate SEMCOG-supported best practices into our operations. Not only that, but this recognition will also help residents and business owners to know about the initiatives being implemented in our community. The City of Troy has actually completed several of the eligible activities, and just to name a few, they include the implementation of a green infrastructure on public property, a transportation safety audit, and the distribution of public outreach information. And you can consult your agenda packet if you'd like to further review the eligible activities. After I compiled research, which was provided by multiple departments within the city staff, I discovered that the City of Troy has actually completed 12 out of 16 eligible activities. Not only does this qualify us for the highest level of this award, which is the gold level, but I feel that it reflects that our city not only rises to meet high standards, but goes above and beyond what is necessary. We are requesting that the city adopts this resolution and that we are able to participate in this program. After the council would approve the program, the SEMCOG staff would then come in to discuss the eligible activities that have been completed, and even discuss potential activities that the City of Troy may be interested in pursuing. Then after this review, a SEMCOG executive would then present a certificate of recognition at a future city council meeting. This would then be filed by a press release, which would be sent to local media outlets, and the City of Troy will be recognized on the SEMCOG website. I believe that we should definitely pursue this award. Our city has made and is continuing to make notable efforts to provide a high quality of life for residents while being mindful of the environment. It is important for citizens, business owners, and others to be informed of these efforts. People that work for the City of Troy should be recognized and appreciated for their impressive efforts, and our city should continue to do all that we can to be an efficient and environmentally friendly city. Are there any questions?
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just read your report. Excellent job. It's nice to see that we're recognized for what we do before we even know that we have to do it, so. Excellent report. Thank you. Thank you very much. Should we like to move the resolution? Sure, I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you for your hard work. Good luck. Our next order of business is I. 5, to rescind and reward the catering contract for community center events, and it looks like Director Carol Anderson is going to present or introduce this item.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item I. 5 is the rescind and re-award of the catering contract for the community center. The current caterer requested termination of the contract, and subsequently, an agreement with Kosch Catering was completed. Documents included in the packet are the termination agreement and the agreement with Kosch. As many of you know, the city has done business with Kosch. We did have an agreement with Kosch to service the Sanctuary Lake Golf Course before management was taken over by Billy Casper. It's anticipated that catering services will continue uninterrupted, as termination of the existing contract is July 31, and Kosch will begin services August 1. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I just have a question. I remember when we talked about this, and we had high hopes for bringing in some new business, and I know, just based on kind of hearsay, and then obviously what was in the memo, that the reservations that they wanted weren't achieved. So I was just wondering if there was something different that Kosch planned on doing to increase the reservations, or obviously they're aware that the numbers have been lower than anticipated, so I just wanted to know if we had given any more thought to that.
We have, and we have agreed to a couple of things that should help with reservations, particularly on the weekends. We are intending to, for them to be the exclusive cater on Saturdays, so if a group does want to have food service, they would have to use Kosch. And one of the things that Kosch brings to the table that was, is different than previous contractors, is that they already have catering services in several locations. This will be another location that they use for their clientele and customers. So there is some already built-in, there are some built-in customers that this is an option that Kosch will present to their existing customers. So we're hopeful.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I would just like to point out that a corrected version was put on the table this evening regarding Section A. So when we move the resolution, if we would just indicate as corrected. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yeah, I have no questions. I'm very familiar with Kosch, have favorable experience with them in the past, so I'm prepared to move the resolution as printed and as amended here on the table.
Support? Who's supported? Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve the agenda item as printed and corrected. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item of business is I. 6, the Contract Ratification of American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Will be introduced by Director Peggy Sears. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item I. 6 addresses the tentative agreement that's been reached between the City of Troy and AFSMI Council 25, which represents our hourly field employees. They reached a ratification this afternoon on the agreement, and city administration supports and recommends ratification by city council. I do, however, have one correction to the item that is in your packet. On the detailed summary that includes, incorporates the contract language on page five at the top discusses Carhartts, and there is a typo in there that the word "including" should not be there.
Got you. Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Sears? Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we like to move the resolution? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Resolve that the tentative agreement that has been reached between the City of Troy and AFSMI for the period July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2016, is hereby ratified by the City Council of the City of Troy, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the final agreement.
Support? Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve I. 6 as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for your hard work. Our next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Anyone at the table that wishes to pull a consent item? Yeah? Councilman Teetz?
Just pull J. 8, please.
Okay. Anyone else? Should we like to move the resolution excluding J. 8? Councilman Teetz?
Approves the consent, resolve this. Troy City Council hereby approves all of the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of J. H., J. 8, which... I appreciate it. Thank you.
Moved by Councilman Teetz and seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve all items on a consent agenda, with the exception of J. 8, which will be considered after the consent agenda items. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I was just going to vote no on J. 8, so that's the reason why I pulled it. Okay. Further discussion on J. 8? I'll listen to the reason if you want, but...
I oppose, I mean, I oppose the DDA plan as it was outlined, and so that's why I'm going to vote against this.
Okay.
Still don't think it's wise to trust people 25 years from now to spend the money wisely, so, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I will move Resolution J. 8 as presented.
Support? Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we... Oh, I'm sorry. Sounded like you. Strike that. Councilman Campbell seconded that. That we approve J. 8 as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here this evening on a consent agenda item, they have all been approved this evening. Our next item of business is memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none this evening. It moves us to public comment for items not on the agenda. Our first speaker is Richard Peters, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I just want to congratulate you folks and the people of Troy for being named one of the best cities in the country for, to raise your family. I want to talk about guns, handguns notably, but since 2009, we've had 15,000 weapons-related deaths a year, according to FBI. There were 9,000 gun-related deaths, and 6,500 pistol-related deaths. Since the Supreme Court decision, we've had Sandy Hook, Colorado Springs, and... Since the Supreme Court decision, we've had Sandy Hook, Colorado Springs, an Arizona Congresswoman shot, and an increase in deaths in Chicago, Detroit, and my guess is most of the major cities across the country. Not to mention the pending Florida trial, a couple of notable athletes, one who slips my mind and the other who played for New England. Around the globe, we see, for instance, that in Africa, where children with guns raise havoc on their societies, which led to some cases, dis条, in some cases genocide. In England, Canada, Japan, and most industrial nations, they have strict gun laws. In the Wild West, Bat Masterson, Mike Earp, I believe, used gun control to check the cattle wrestlers. Not only does this affect bystanders, but particularly are these relationships involving men and their spouses. So I would hope that Congress takes that into mind, and hopefully, things will be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Reinhardt, Troy resident.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Reinhardt, please watch your language this time, okay, please?
I'm sorry that offended you, because I hear a lot more from your, from your police knocking on my door, okay, than that little thing.
Okay.
I do have a special number now that I can talk to the police, okay? Also, I make up these placemats here this, this week to let you know that I'm always working, and I try to pretend I've never been to the city of Troy, and I just Googled something called Bob Goslick this week. And what I found out, that he's been arrested for soliciting prostitutes, he's been arrested for exposure himself, trying to run over people with ticket, you know, at the Silverdome. You know, is this all on Keep Strong Troy website now? Now, I'm not making this up, I just cut and paste. In other words, when your police pick me up and put me in Havenwick, I take scrapbooking. So this is what I do, I'm scrapbooking. I also like to remind my K that I said I'll give him $1,000 to find out who took the 40 grand, not $1,000 a day, because he came up to me and said he would tell me after 40 days who took the money. That's what Mike said. But I assured him it's only $1,000 bounty, so Mike knows where the money is, so talk to Mike. But anyway, and then the second page here is about Eugen. Eugen hesitating, that said that we've got the most thing, I classify her as a troll, because on the Fight Hate page that supports you, Slater, 100%, they love you, but all they do is talk about the hate. And I'm going to do everything these people did to Janet to you, because this is my map, this is my plan. I didn't make it up, it'd be on the internet, all this stuff's on the internet, and also I'm recording this, so when you strike my stuff, I got the recording, okay? And when I showed your police department, somebody on the internet called McGee made a statement that I got to worry about my personal safety, I just handed it over to my lieutenant, because they know I'm a loose cannon, and they don't want me in trouble. So they're going to take care of the problem for me, okay? So you have a good night, because they don't want nothing to happen to me, because I'm the money man, I'm the whale. If I get in jail, they got no money. And as far as campaigning goes, I checked how much a campaign sign costs, and I found out it was better for me to buy the equipment than to have it done. So I have the capability of making any sign I want, or any T-shirt, and you're going to see my line of T-shirts coming out. You're featured, Mayor, so you have a good day.
That concludes the, people have signed up to speak this evening. Our next order of business is council referrals. There are none this evening, and our next item of business is council comments. Councilman Teetz?
Thank you. One, one thing I wanted to bring up tonight was the annual evaluations for the city manager and city attorney. Not that there's any particular reason, but I, it's been, I've been on the council for 18 months now, and we haven't done that, and I'm wondering if that's something we schedule during the summer, or is that, kind of looking for some direction? I just think it'd be good as a council to give them feedback, positive feedback and so forth, and so.
Sure. Typically, it's an annual review, and it's done usually in June, the summertime, and we would schedule a closed session either before or after a scheduled council meeting, and we typically do that annually. City manager's only been here for six months, probably seems like three years, but I would, I would think we would want to do that at least after a year. But if we want to schedule a review, we can do that anytime. City Attorney Bloom, if I, if you want to add anything to that, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, there is the ability to meet in closed session, provided that we request it. Generally, we would, just so that you can have an opportunity to be very forthright in, in your commentary. And it has been done in the past, coincident with the new fiscal year, so that we could get a raise in the past, that obviously, with the financial position that the city is in, obviously, there hasn't been the need to do that. But whenever council is ready to do that, it has been a little bit of time since I've had my review, and I'm certainly willing to do that at council's convenience. Again, it usually works either before or after a meeting, because you're already here anyways, and it normally takes about an hour, hour and a half.
Councilman Teetz?
Maybe, should we schedule one of the meetings in August? I mean, seeing that it's been, it'll be nearly two years.
Sure. I think, I think that's, I think that's appropriate.
Before or after the 12th, August 12th meeting? Would that be fine?
After the August 12th, is that okay?
Mayor?
City Attorney Bloom?
And that's fine, I just know that you have just scheduled a public hearing on the DDA plans for that same night, so I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that before you set the date.
I think it's okay.
I think the 12th is fine. I mean, I imagine that hearing would last too long.
Are you okay with delaying the city managers at this point?
Should we just do it the same time, so it's a, again?
I can just give you, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Sure.
I can just give you the historical perspective. Normally, we do them on two separate nights, because again, it's usually either before or after, and it makes for a very long meeting if you were to do them both on the same night.
Right. I'd feel more comfortable waiting till November to do the city manager, then that would be a year. That's okay.
Then would you do it the following July? I, I think it's a healthy thing to just give feedback both ways, and so...
Yeah. I think that might be a better way to do it, do a year, and then we'll do them both in July, the following year.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Any other comments on that? So we'll schedule City Attorney Bloom for August 12th, closed session after the meeting, and we'll pick a date in the future for the November review. And then we'll try to do them in July, every year, and maybe we can give some raises that we haven't given for quite some time. Other council comments? Councilman Henderson?
Is there, is there a form, a document that we found typical to other companies that would do a review, or is this just a discussion?
It's, it's, it's up to, it's up to us what we do. So if you want, we could talk to City Attorney Bloom, how we've done this in the past. Generally, documents are provided to us, and then you can bring any questions or discussion with you to ask or present at that time. City Attorney Bloom?
I will just add that in the past, I have provided kind of a checklist for you, different areas, that kind of is a template for you to do your evaluation, and that is prepared from some of the other evaluations that are done in other municipalities that are members of the International Municipal Lawyers Association. So it's kind of a template that I've compiled from other similar evaluations that have been done in other municipalities.
Any other council comments? Councilman Teetz?
I think perhaps we should speak with our HR director, whose name escapes me.
Peggy Sears.
Yes, of course, who we've talked to for two hours tonight. The, and is there a universal form that would also be of help? I'm just saying, I'm just, that we can use for both of our direct reports and so forth.
We have to be cautious in closed session, what we, what we bring in there and keep in there. City Attorney Bloom, did you want to talk further on that?
I would just, I mean, certainly, however you want to do the evaluation, that's fine. I would just indicate that our roles are very different, and so I'm not sure that you're going to be able to use the same evaluation form if you want the more detailed, you know, pointing, you know, a little bit more of the detailed descriptions of our jobs. But you can do whatever it is that...
Perhaps you could provide a copy of that form that you've used in the past. I've seen it, and I know Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and Councilwoman McGinnis have seen it, but maybe you could provide that to them, and if you have something other than that that you might be looking for, you could maybe bring it, bring it forward. I would just like to indicate, I know Mr. Peters brought, brought up that Troy was nominated, was named one of America's top 10 towns for families by Circle, or Family Circle magazine, and if you go to the magazine and on page, or page 80, you'll see the article where Troy's been named America's, one of America's top 10 best towns for families. And I'd just like to read this if I could. With modestly priced homes, excellent city services, including top-rated library, outstanding parks and recreation programs and facilities, a very low crime rate, and one of the best school systems in Michigan, it's no wonder Troy is tops for families. America's top 10 family-friendly cities is featured, once again, as I indicated in the August issue of Family Circle on newsstands, or you can go to online, www.familycircle.com/besttowns. Family Circle's 7th Annual List judged top towns on affordable housing options, green public spaces, strong school systems, household income levels, and neighbors to count on. So I think that, that sums up what Troy is all about, and we should be very proud that we've been named one of the top 10 best. Any other comments? There are no study items this evening, no closed sessions, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.